Good evening, everyone. I know it's 6:00 PM. I'm going to ask if there's no objections from my colleagues if we could have a five-minute delay until all members are here. Perfect. And then everyone settled in. So we'll begin at 6:05. Commissioner Cruz?
Oh, there I am.
Yeah. There he comes. There we go.
Hey, how are you?
All right. I see that we're all here. I team, I'm going to ask if you could please begin the broadcast.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
This meeting is called to order. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this special city commission meeting of the City of Boynton Beach City Commission, specifically our strategic planning workshop. This evening, we are joined, of course, by members of the city commission, Commissioner Cruz, Vice Mayor Turkin, Commissioner Hay, Commissioner Kelly, along with our administrative staff, our assistant city managers, Adam Temple, Catherine Matos, deputy city manager, Andrew Mack, city manager Dan Dugger, as well as our city attorney, welcome, Shawna Lamb. I want to remind everyone that this is a workshop. As I was speaking to somebody earlier today, this is a time for us to gather ideas, envelope ideas, and to build consensus. There will be no formal voting taking place at this workshop. I'm going to turn now to our city clerk for our roll call.
Mayor Penzerga?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turkin?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Our invocation for this evening will be led by Commissioner Hay, followed by the pledge of allegiance, led by Commissioner Kelly. Let's all stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather once again to make decisions that's best for our city and our citizen. Blessed now this final strategic planning model as we look forward to decades and decades in the future. Thank you for each member of this board and our staff. Thank you for everyone who's present, blessed their families, open up our minds and our hearts that we may be able to receive the message that you would have us to receive and make the proper decision. And we give you all the praise and we give you all the honor. For it's in your name we pray. Let every heart say, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We're moving on now to agenda approval, additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda. There are no amendments for myself. Are there any amendments from staff? Any amendments for my colleagues? Let's begin with Commissioner Kelly. Anything from you?
No, Mayor.
Commissioner Hay?
No.
Vice Mayor?
Negative.
And Commissioner Kelly. Uh, Cruz, excuse me.
Um, I don't know if I texted the city manager earlier, and I don't know if we could have a very brief, um, like, update as to what's going on with the, um, infrastructure because it's relevant to the strategic planning. Maybe we'll discuss it within the...
You know, we, uh, we spoke, I spoke with Andrew. We just need to get a general consensus from, uh, the commission whether or not there's an appetite to actually alter what we have right now and add that to, uh, to the bond for March or the referendum.
But that's going to be voted next meeting, right?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
All right. So with that, Commissioner Cruz, I take it there was no amendment?
Yep, no amendment, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor, second made by Commissioner Hay. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Agenda is adopted. We're now moving on to the presentation. This is the final strategic plan overview and wrap-up discussion. I'm going to turn now to our consultant for the strategic plan, Lyle Summitt. Lyle?
Thank you. Dan, do you have any comments?
Phil Lyle, actually, that is my... I'll be right back. Okay. Tonight, we're going to jump right into it. Since we last met, uh, I met with staff last week to update because some of the projects that were identified by you all in the interviews were actually done. So tonight, what we're doing is reviewing a final time, the vision, the mission, the goals, and once we review it, then we're going to determine priorities. For policy items, what are your top six and next high six? So you're going to have priorities. Because if you don't have priorities, everything is a priority. So tonight will be, it's not the final decision because that will be made in your formal, but we will be looking at, uh, what are your top and high. We'll also look at the management actions with advice to the city manager, top and high as well. So that is the extent of what we're going to do is do, one, a review to finalize, to make sure you're okay with what we've got. If we need to change things, feel free. We can change it around, but I think it reflects what we did in our initial strategic planning. Staff did a super job last week updating the, the projects, adding them, and you'll see the projects and actions in five categories. One, and I'm doing it now, I'll be repeating it again, uh, but are policy actions that require the F-bomb, funding or other major decisions by you. Management are things that are going to be coming to you that you'll have the ultimate decision in, but usually mayors and commissioners say, "Oh, we know it's coming, so we won't prioritize it as important." So we've separated both of those two stacks. The third is management and progress. That is where staff is implementing decisions you've already made, it's already funded, but be aware that all of that is being done. We'll look at the list. Do you have any questions? And that is management and progress are internal, and then infrastructure and major projects, whether it be road or water or park, you'll see that listed as a major project. Then there are other things that we discussed earlier that didn't make it to the list, and those are called on the horizon. A year from now, you come back and say, "Hey, do any of these need to move up?" So, uh, there will be those five sort of stacks. We'll take the first two, policy and management, and determine the priorities. So that is my purpose here tonight, I believe.
Thank you, Lyle. If I could just say a few words to my colleagues. I want this to be a open discussion, so please, while he's speaking, don't wait until the end. If you have a question, if you have a thought, just raise your hand and let's address them on the spot, and we'll go back and forth. I want this to feel fluid and dynamic, okay?
Perfect.
All right.
This is a workshop.
Exactly, exactly.
And a working document as well.
So part one, Lyle, is to go over what we have so far, right?
Yes. So if you look in the first tab to page two on the landscape, just to review the model, you're driving this, the city to the future. The vision is where you want the community to be in 15 years, and it's a set of value-based principles. That's our destination, and we will review that first. The vehicle that's going to get you there is the mission, and we talked about what is the purpose, we talked about the level of service you expect, uh, that is the vehicle that is going to take you there. Uh, we'll look at it real quickly, and then we'll jump into the plan. And the plan will have goals with objectives which are outcomes for five years. It doesn't hit everything that's in the vision or everything else. It is focusing, this is what we see as important outcomes for our community in five years. You sorted that down. If you may recall, it was a long list. Now it's a very well-focused list. Then we'll look at the challenges. The challenges are short-term, looking at the next one to two years. Long-term, again, you prioritize those and separated those into two stacks. See if those are fine. And then we'll just look at the actions, and then go to the next goal. And as we get through with the four goals, then we'll do the prioritization, which is in the second tab. So I'm going to just jump in. So if you go to page four, uh, there were seven major principles as part of your vision. In 15 years, what you said is important is that Boynton Beach in 2038 is a safe community and a beautiful community, and those are defined, as you'll see in a minute. That in 15 years has a vibrant destinations in the Congress District and the Downtown Cultural District. In 15 years, Boynton Beach is a livable community for all, fun experiences for all, both residents and guests, and a strong diverse economy. Again, those came from you. Then if you start on page five, "safe community," and I'm not going to read them for the sake of time, uh, you've seen these before, so we'll see if there's any refinements. There are nine definitions of what does a safe community mean. Any comments on those? Look at them quickly, and if you're okay, give me a thumbs up.
So for me, Lyle, overall, I'm on the same page. Obviously, I was there. The only additional thought I have today as it comes to the vision is that we're very specific about what our vibrant, quote-unquote vibrant destinations are. The Congress District, Downtown Cultural District.
Okay.
In the future, I don't think that there will just be two districts. There might be a brewery district, there might be a marina district, a healthcare medical district. You know, healthcare is certainly something I've been eyeing for quite some time, given that they're our largest employer. So I'm comfortable with keeping it as is. I know we've already discussed this, but I just wanted to share that with my colleagues that there really could be more than two, and we don't have to constrain ourselves.
Well, I have a suggestion. We add between four and five principles, "other districts." And so it reflects that you've got these two for focus, but others in the future may evolve. And put that in the, the plan. Does that make sense?
Are you suggesting that's added to the vision statement here?
Yes.
And how would it be worded exactly? What are your thoughts?
I'm not sure exactly the, the precise wording. I can give you the concept. So it would be vibrant destination, Congress corridor, comma, downtown cultural district, comma, and other potential future districts.
Too long? What do you guys think? Is that okay?
I, I, I think I see where you're going with this, Mayor. Maybe like identifying, identifying those additional districts. I think even with that suggestion, it kind of keeps it vague, and I think what you're saying, and I think we kind of have those district, districts now, but I think we need to really focus on empowering them and making them flourish. Is that where your thoughts are?
Generally speaking, yes. I don't know if I need to identify all of them in this vision statement. I just want to leave room for the possibility.
Okay.
But I also don't want to make this so long.
You know, what if we just added one more principle, "other potential districts"? I mean, not carrying it in. And then add a page, uh, between, make that five, and then livable community is six, and then maybe identify Commissioner or Vice Mayor what some of those may be. Potential, and call them potential districts. And you mentioned medical...
Marina.
Marina.
And if I'm not mistaken, I think our staff may have this information already from the past.
Yes.
We may have.
Okay. We could add that as...
See some nods.
Does that make sense to you all? And add that as fifth one, and then we'll just have eight. You okay with that? Thumbs up?
Yes.
And I'll work with staff to get the exact wording on what those are, but it would give you examples of what those potential additional districts might be.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments on the vision? You can look at the other principles.
I'm seeing none.
Commissioner?
He's ready to go?
Good recap of everything.
I think we're ready to go, Lyle.
You ready to go?
Yep.
All righty. So I'll make that revision. Go to the mission, which is the purpose. We talked about it. Uh, this is, uh, you're looking at the vehicle that's going to take us there. So what is the mission? And we talked about a financially responsible and sound manner that the city acts in a, and provides core municipal services, quality-of-life services, and plans and invests in the future through a high-performing city team and an engaged Boynton Beach community. The definitions start on the next page, and again, you can see for each principle, uh, what the definitions that came from our prior session. Any comments on this? Give you a minute to look at it, see if there's any suggested changes there.
No amendments for me, but let's turn to my colleagues.
Commissioner Cruz? Kelly? Hey? You guys did some good work before. I know it's been a few months, but it, it should have some lasting value. The, the four goals you identified are on page 15, uh, and that is, in the five-year goals, uh, we'll look at each one of these in depth. It's a financially sound city government, providing exceptional service, strong local economy, a great place to live, a clean, safe, clean, and attractive community. And these all have outcomes, challenges, and actions. So if you go to financially sound on page 16, those objectives were the ones you identified are the most important for you, that we need to focus on during the next five years. These are outcomes for five years. And it's providing the high level of core service, it's building and maintaining the infrastructure facilities, equipment, uh, focus on and fund the core service responsibilities, deliver services in an efficient, cost-effective manner, leverage city resources, build fi- a strong financial reserves, and increase and diversify city revenues to support your services. You okay with those? Any final comments on that? Ready to move? Thumbs up? I got a couple.
Thumbs up for me?
And then the challenges, we don't need to go through them, and I'm not going to read them, are on page 17. The things that you identified short-term are on the left side of the page, and there were nine. And this is also a quick refresher for you when we get into the actions. You okay with those? Now, we ready to move to the next page? If you notice, the actions have already been divided. These are ones we had reviewed before, and these are the ones we're going to be prioritizing, not by goal, but across all four goals. So they are, for the next year, road resurfacing program expansion, comprehensive city improvement plan upgrade, that's dealing with infrastructure, resiliency action plan, core services, comprehensive inventory of the services, and prioritization, uh, public safety impact fee, city branding and marketing program, and rate stabilization fund. Those are all on the policy list for the management's list. It's TPA projects, grants, uh, fire equipment upgrades, and fire, uh, rescue service contracts with other cities. So all of these would be addressed. We'll prioritize these later. Commissioner?
When, you're saying when we pri- we're going to number our priorities later?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Because what we're going to do is take all those policy, Commissioner, and put them all on one list. And it's alre- those are already provided in the next section. And so we'll take, you'll have the goal number and these seven listed, and then from there, you'll pick out of the list six and six.
Copy that. Thank you.
Any comments on that page? Do those look familiar?
Could you just discuss a little bit further about the right side of that page, management actions? I only see three.
That is correct. Those would be ones that would come back to you for policy action. They are working on those.
Okay. I just kind of assumed there would be more.
What? Oh, wait.
My natural assumption was there would be more than three.
Oh, we've got plenty more coming.
Okay, all right.
With the other goals. Uh, this goal, though, if you want to look on the next page, which captures Mayor, your point, man, look at the management and progress. All of those items are currently being worked on by your staff. And there is, if you look at them, there are a lot, and then the major construction projects are on page 20, and there's 22 of those. So these are not done. These are all being worked on. You're not going to prioritize these tonight, but these are ones, uh, if you look at other cities that I work with, and I'll be working with staff, is council gets an update monthly on what the projects are, but their, what their priorities are, and whether they're online or not, so you can actually track ones that are important for you.
I like that.
Because you may get a question on it and go, "What is it?" Oh, that becomes your cheap seat.
Yeah. We don't have to keep coming to you for specific...
No.
You know, updates? We can just look at the sheet. There it is.
That, that's one of our main priorities that we've been working on, because I know the, the commission as a whole, like, all of you have questions daily on projects that are going on throughout the city, and sometimes my memory fails me. So, uh, something like that. Me and Andrew, we've, uh, we've been talking about putting something like that together so you guys would have access to it and see exactly where the progress is.
And the strategic plan usually fits right into that model. So it can be on computers, laptops, cell phones, whatever, and you can pop it up. The other thing you're going to get is a, you know, all coaches have the one-pager, a laminated one-page with, "Here's our vision, mission, goals, and here are our policy top and high, and here's the management." So you can have this laminated, so you can do this like the, the football coaches.
Lyle, I'm not a fan of reinventing the wheel, so can you let us know what other, um...
I'm going to give you several.
...system that we can use that you, you think in your, uh, I guess in your experience works best?
Simple is better.
There you go.
Because it gets used. Some that put it into these big, huge programs, and it's one, one A, one A one, one A B two, they don't get used. That's the realism. So I'll give you three that have been tested and used in other cities, and usually it's better to have it homegrown than to just put it into a canned program.
Thank you, Lyle. I think that's good for the commission, but also for staff, just managing projects, keeping track of everything.
Yeah, many times you look at strategic planning, that's additional work, recognizing everything that is being done by your staff. Done isn't done until it's really done, and these are implementing directions that you've already provided and that they're adding value to your, your residents out there. Does that make sense? Any comments on those? Ready to go to goal two. Goal two is a strong local economy. It's on page 21. That is, for the next five years, is redevelop the Congress District, develop downtown and cultural district, have more job opportunities for your residents, have a major university, college, trade school, having a presence here. We talked about that at some length in our prior session. Expand experiential-based entertainment, because that's what people are looking for today, experience-based, uh, and have modern office space options within your city. Those are the outcomes, and we'll talk about some of the actions of getting there. You okay with those? Going to the challenges on page 22, uh, short-term, you can see nine of those that you identified short-term. And we'll see some actions. And then there's long-term as well. Many of those long-term may be worked on, but the focus means for actions is a lot on the, the left side of that page. Any changes there? You okay with those? Thumbs up if you're ready to move?
Um, one comment. Item eight, I don't remember discussing that. Limited fis- perhaps it was a different discussion. Uh, limited fiscal tax growth due to CRA.
Yeah, that was one.
I think I understand the intent of that line, but...
Do you have a suggestion for it?
No, no, I'm just trying to recall what was discussed about that. I just don't remember. I don't know if my colleagues remember what that discussion was like.
Limited fiscal tax growth due to CRA. I mean, I think, I, I don't, I don't know specifically what this is referring to, but I know we've discussed about the boundaries, whether we want to look at redistricting the CRA, expanding or consolidating, because I know, you know, I don't want to go too involved, but I know that there is a, um, there's an option to, I believe, lessen the CRA district, and I know that there is a lot of properties along the intercoastal there that I don't, I personally don't think are defined as, um, you know, uh, blum- slighted areas, blighted areas, I'm sorry. And so I think we need to look at that, especially if we want to help finance or generate revenue for services out West as we grow. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I think there is an opportunity to collect some revenue, um, into the city's coffers by looking at redrawing that, that CRA district. Again, I think this is a conversation for another time, because I think there's a lot of details and variables that go into that, especially with potential county programs being affected. But I think it is something that, for me, is important, especially the east side of federal, because, you know, it, you know, I, I have a little bit of federal highway in my district, but, you know, I know there's a lot of neighborhoods on the east side that don't see the ROI of their tax dollars, um, especially in reference to beautification in the federal corridor. And so I think, you know, we have to look at additional revenue generating options to fund these city-initiated, um, or fund these, these city-initiative directions, and so...
That was part of our discussion.
Yeah, and, and I know, it was, I think it was more of a general...
Two of you? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to know what the intent was, and so it sounds like this item is really about boundaries.
Right, correct.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
Maybe clarify that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the intent.
With potential boundary changes.
Potential boundary changes. And I look forward to having that discussion.
All right.
Do you have any comment at all on that one, Mayor?
Uh, no, the Vice Mayor pretty much, uh, I, we're looking to grow the city, essentially, and I know the projections that I saw were roughly, I want to say, 88,000 to 90,000 residents over the next five years, and that's with the development that's coming to the downtown district. So obviously, all of those property taxes are slotted to go to the CRA coffers and not the city coffers.
but, you know, I know there's a lot of neighborhoods on the east side that don't see the ROI of their tax dollars, especially in reference to beautification in the federal corridor. And so, I think, you know, we have to look at additional revenue generating options to fund these city-initiated, um, or fund these, these city-initiative directions. And so-
That was part of our discussion.
Yeah, and, and I know, it was, I think it was more of a general-
Two of you? Yeah, okay. Um, I just wanted to know what the intent was, and so, it sounds like this item is really about boundaries.
Ri- correct, correct, correct.
Maybe clarify that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know-
With potential boundary changes.
Potential boundary changes. And I look forward to having that discussion.
Alright.
Do you have any comment at all on that one, Manager?
Uh, no, the Vice Mayor pretty much, I, it, we're looking to grow the city, essentially. And I know the projections that I saw were roughly, I wanna say eighty-eight to ninety thousand residents over the next five years. And that's with the development that's coming to the downtown district. So, obviously, all of those property taxes are slotted to go to the CRA coffers and not the city coffers. However, we're providing services to those residents. And we, uh, we have to figure out a way to generate revenue to fund those services for the future.
And maybe re- maybe rewording it, potential boundary changes, allowing to capture fiscal and tax growth, something like that.
And, and, and this may even meet, because this, that decision could im- I mean, you could throw that into the goal one, right? So, we, you know, you kinda touched on that in goal one, with potential revenue drivers to, you know, perform basic city operational functions. You know what I mean? I think maybe this is, needs to be in a different place.
We can move that up.
Y- you know what I'm saying? Because I think it is important for us to be mindful, especially if we're discussing infrastructure with this huge impact of a, of density that's gonna be coming, you know, you know, within the square mile.
Both goals.
Say again?
Maybe listed under both goals.
Yeah.
As both a challenge and an opportunity there.
Yeah, yeah, double edged sword.
Does that make sense?
It definitely makes sense.
For increasing revenues?
Well, I, he said it's a challenge and an opportunity.
The district change, yes.
Yeah.
And then, but it's capturing the, those dollars to support the services that you all provide.
And there's a, there's a plethora of different avenues to, uh, to raise revenue for the city. I think, um, I, I'm blessed to have a great team to where we, uh, we're putting together reven- revenue generating, kinda like innovative committees, to where we're gonna start meeting and brainstorm and conceptualize to, uh, to kinda look at what's viable, what's not viable, and what can be implemented sooner rather than later. So, and everything's gonna be for the benefit of the city at the end of the day, so.
Any other comments on these? Then we go to the actions, uh, and there are five policy, and this one, Mayor, has ten management. So, they even out between the two goals. The mall redevelopment plan, Congress, uh, district redevelopment plan and overlay, uh, citywide economic development policy and action plan, downtown parking master plan, and strategic annexations, the analysis of impact and your policy direction. Those are the five for policy. Management are downtown development projects, there are five of those listed here. Indoor entertainment regulations, short-term rentals, coastal management element policies update and adoption, conservation element policy and amendments, transportation element amendment, private property rights element adoption, minimum square footage for dwelling units, workforce housing policy and program, and your ear amendment. Uh, all of those are on the management list for ado- consideration. Fire away, Tom. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So, I, I think three management actions, I'd, I'd like to hear from Adam and his team. I feel like you guys are on that. I don't know, yeah, so like, I don't even, I think we could probably remove that. It's, it's been some time since we last, uh, got together, but if we can focus on something else, I think the development team's done a pretty good job of-
Are they all done?
Short-term rentals, yes, they're done.
So, three is done. Are the others still active?
Yes.
So, we'll leave those on the list. And then, there's two, there's three CRA TIF policy, private marina development and CRA plan. I do have a question of, based on what we just talked about. Do we need to add one on CRA boundaries review and adjustment? For the next year?
I, I think that would entail a joint, another joint discussion. So, I think maybe the action is having that joint discussion first.
Before adding it?
Yes.
Because we could put in joint discussion as the, the action item.
That would be up to my colleagues.
Lyle, does that not fall under three with the CRA plan and updating that? Doesn't that fall within, uh, discussion item?
That sounds about right, Commissioner.
We just had, we just had a joint meeting and, uh, and did we hire a consultant to do that? Is that what my understanding was?
We move forward with agreeing to hire. And CRA staff will then proceed to do that.
I think it could be part of that.
So, they're already on that?
Put their boundary review as part of that.
And that was part of the direction.
Commissioner? Council wanted to jump in, I have a feeling of what you're gonna say, but-
About just a follow-up on the joint discussion with CRA staff? Does that, does that work?
I thought you were gonna caution us about CRA.
Well, yeah.
We're approaching.
They shouldn't get too much, because you don't have your council here or any CRA representative.
Right.
But that's where it would be covered.
So, follow-up, how did you word it? Follow-up with-
Follow-up with CRA staff regarding joint discussion.
Okay.
Relating to the CRA plan.
Works for me. Yeah, we're not gonna prioritize, it's just noted that you brought them up and we put them on the CRA action list.
Commissioner Hay, were you about to say something?
I was just thinking that, uh, isn't there a date where all CRAs with sunset, twenty thirty-six? I believe it is, or something like that? I mean, based on when that is, would factor in what, how we should prioritize over a timeline to, to get things done and complete it. Because you don't wanna go beyond the legal, um, you know, sunset thing. So, I'm just curious that if anybody knew, I thought I heard that.
Twenty forty-five or something?
I thought it was in the forties.
Forty's, yeah.
Is it in the forties?
Yeah, another twenty years.
Will you look it up? Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments on the actions on ten, twenty-three? You okay with those?
Thumbs up for me.
And then, if you go to the next page, uh, there are five management in progress, and then, a lot that are on the horizon for the next year. Ready to go to the third goal?
Um, I'm sorry, the marina. Waterfront master plan, okay, I see it, okay, we're good. Waterfront master plan, that's, would that be, say again? Right, okay.
Drew, could you, yeah, talk into the mic?
Yeah.
And I know we had talked about doubling down on the waterfront and trying to enhance our, our waterfront here commercially.
No, I, I do remember what you're referencing, Vice Mayor, and I think we did a conceptualized kind of rendering with Anderson in, in reference to exactly what you're saying, so.
Should we add that for an action?
I, I, I wanna say maybe it's somewhere else in here, I just wanna make sure we're not missing that.
It was, it's essentially an expansion of our marina area.
Maybe we need to add that as an action. Would there be more policy? At this point?
It might be goal two.
It, it could be, I-
Or it might be under the marina district.
But couldn't, couldn't that fall under a waterfront master plan, though? If we plan on an expansion of our marina area?
That's why I was asking.
And move that up to an action.
Couldn't, couldn't that, couldn't we just include that into a waterfront master plan? Just add it, just a, uh-
And marina expansion.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, because I think, like, I, I would, I, I think that's, based on what I've seen from that conception, like, I don't think that's, that's not too far away.
Let's add that as number six on page twenty-three under policy.
And, and so, Lyle, does that then change and add to our objectives on page twenty-one?
Not necessarily.
Okay, because we don't talk about the marina. I just wanna make sure that it doesn't need to be part of the objectives, since it's-
Maybe add that as a seventh.
Covers that, yeah.
Yeah, because I, from what, I think we, there was consensus for that. I think we all kinda discussed about doubling down on our waterfront.
Marina element as part of the outcomes. And then, as an action, we will add it as number six under policy. And it would be the waterfront, master plan, and marina expansion. Does that capture it?
When you say policy actions on page twenty-three?
Yes, number six.
Yep, perfect.
And then, we'll add it to your prioritization tonight, so.
Sorry, and just to jump back to the CRA question, so unless our, um, agreement or whatever, the document that creates the CRA, unless it's before September thirtieth, twenty thirty-nine, it's September thirtieth, twenty thirty-nine, or whichever occurs, um, earlier, unless there's an agreement by everyone to continue the CRA. Majority voted the members of the governing body. And just for the record, maybe that's statute one sixty-three point three seven five five.
Okay, those are good. Any other comments? You ready to move to goal three? This is why we're reviewing it tonight. A great place to live. We've identif- you identified six outcomes. Greater ease and mobility, we're on page twenty-five. Upgrade parks, park venue, sports field. Work with the school district to improve the quality of the schools. We had a lively discussion on that, it was a partnership you all talked to me about. Develop new park or recreation centers in West Boynton Beach. Develop new quality housing options and become a walkable, bike-friendly community, were your objectives. Outcomes you wanted to see. You okay with those? Any comments?
Yeah, I think that correlates with, um, how we mentioned, uh, TPA and TPA grants. I think that objective number six would be something that could be easily attainable with, um, TPA funding.
And you'll see that coming up in a couple of places. Any other comments, ready to move to the challenges? Challenges and opportunities on page twenty-six. Uh, there are eight here. Any comments on any of these?
Lyle, my only question is how, and it's very important, but I'm just wondering if it's kind of out of place is seven talking about the city cemetery, because I don't see where that correlates with this topic, but maybe it doesn't, I'm just-
It was, this is where we put it before all the cemetery actions.
Okay.
They were listed here.
Okay.
You can move them, but I think, uh, you look at broad, great place to live, it's maybe being born, live, and perpetually contribute to the community.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to add, or at least share with you, is, and we have this on the east side of the city, but we don't really have a great, I don't know what to call it, a communal space on the western side where we could host events. If you notice, most of our events are on the east side, there's the amphitheater and all these things, but we don't really have an equivalent of that, uh, in the west side.
So, maybe add as number nine, lack of community gathering and event space is in, on, in the west area. Does that make sense?
I see the City Manager wants to chime in. Is it already on here?
Well, what, what I-
Is it included?
What I wanted to mention is, is we could actually use the Parks Bond if it does, in the event it does pass, to actually, um, have a solution to what you're talking about, to have a western, uh, convention center or somewhere where we can actually have events at on the west side of Boynton.
Which would respond to this challenge.
Correct, yes, sir.
And that's, that's actually, you'll see it on Tuesday night as part of the item, mentioning that.
But again, that would mean that we, we need support from the commission for that.
You okay with adding that? Thumbs up if you're o- That was good, Ed. Any other comments on the challenges? You okay?
How are we wording that amendment?
Lack of community gathering and event spaces in West Boynton Beach.
That works.
Keeping it simple and-
Yep.
But it's a challenge and opportunity here.
Yep.
Going to the, uh, actions. You have two actions that are policy. Uh, grave sites and cemetery expansion and comprehensive mobility plan. And on management, traffic calming policy and project, park playground equipment inventory and replacement, and artificial coral reef project grant funding and completion. There are some other for the CRA here as well. Any comments there?
Just another project that probably the Parks Bond could help out as well.
I think for the, uh, number two, the mobility plan, that's something that a TPA grant could definitely fund.
You bet.
Um, I think that the only TPA grant that we really moved forward with was something that was in my district, and it definitely was not something that was welcomed by the community, so that, but there was no conversation before that was even a plan.
Do we know how long ago that was, that, that was conceptualized, or when it was actually, uh, the application was?
Were that, I know it was years ago, right? It wasn't-
No, this is in the last eighteen months, or-
It wasn't last, last year?
It was a workshop we had in the community to see if we wanted to add sidewalks within-
In Gulfview Harbor.
Gulfview Harbor, and it was, and they decided not to move forward, or they did not, they didn't want it.
Yeah, they were very upset, um, well, specifically for losing some of that front, um-
The easement.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so.
That is a constant, a common theme that we find, because we, we have done it in other places where we brought projects like that, and a lot of the communities don't want to lose their front yard, they feel like we're taking away-
Same thing in my, in my community. If, if the city decide to do that, I can, like, the whole neighborhood would be not happy.
I would urge you, uh, to consider, when you do your prioritization, remember the management action and goal one, which is TPA grants, which addresses some of the things you just talked about, Commissioner, directly. Any others? You okay with this page? Yeah. And then, there's management in progress and major projects here on page twenty-eight. All of these are being worked on.
Actually, Lyle, um, if we can remove some of them that have been completed, number two, three, and four, seven-
On which one?
Um, on the left column, management in progress.
Okay.
Two, three, and four, seven, and eleven are completed.
Okay, they'll be removed.
Two, three, four, seven, eleven.
I'm, I'm sorry, on which page?
On page twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, column on the left.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, any other changes here? Ready to move on to goal four? Goal four is safe, clean, attractive community. Your objectives in five years is have residents feeling safe, have a welcoming, distinctive entrances to Boynton Beach, creating that positive first impression, have a low crime rate, have a clean community, no trash litter or garbage, and have attractive median streetscapes and landscaping, both public and private. You okay with those for five years? Going to the challenges and opportunities on page thirty-one, there are eight there. You okay with those? Any changes or questions?
Question.
Sure.
Um, I know we all agreed about the entrances to Boynton Beach. Is that something that we could use, like, art funding for, like, from the arts board?
Catherine?
One percent?
Did you hear the Commissioner Cruz's question?
I believe so, if the, if the development projects that are paying into the art fee choose to do the in lieu of, then it could go toward entryway features.
So, maybe, is that something that-
They'd have to go through the public art process and-
Okay, thank you, so-
Yeah, they, yeah, it would have to go through the arts department for the design, but I'm- Yeah, it would have to go through the arts department for the design, but I'm, I'm not sure. What's the, do we know the balance of the arts fund right now? Mara?
At the moment, no.
No, she can, we can research and figure out, because some of the marquee signs that we're talking about as far as like creating an intro, or I guess a positive attractiveness, like, on the entry into the city of Boynton Beach. And I can throw a plug to another city, City of Viera. If you guys have ever traveled up towards Jacksonville, they have these large marquee lit up signs there, made of stucco, a hundred feet tall, that you know you're entering the city of Viera. So I, I, is that kind of like what you're alluding to, Commissioner?
I mean, I don't know what it would look like. I know it was a priority for, I think, everyone on the board and.
Oh, yeah. It's on next page, number one.
Maybe make sure that we had like a plan and action of how we could arrange that. And if we could encourage developers to say, you know, we, we're looking for this, you know, we want to use those fundings. So could you participate in the lieu of instead of bringing your own statute and then making it a possibility for funding? So we don't have to spend the avaler in dollars on the signs.
Could we, um, could we, we would need to incentivize that for developers. So like, could we, is there a mechanism to where, if it's a one percent assessment, if they provide a piece of art, but maybe you drop that down a little bit if it's in lieu of? Does that make sense?
Yeah, what I'd love to do is let us take, do a little analysis and bring it back to you all, because that's a great idea. But I would want to just make sure that we're.
It's number one on the next page for action, and you'll prioritize it.
Yeah, when you think of the major arteries that actually lead in from north and south, you got Congress, I ninety-five, federal highway, Sea Crest, not so, not so much. But I think those three, those three grow rates, north and south, especially when you're leaving Lake Worth or you're leaving Delray to come into Boynton Beach.
I think, Commissioner, you can, I, I modified. It says funding mechanism, including developer conference contributions as well as the using art funding. So that would be captured in that first one. Any other comments on the challenges? You okay with those?
Number seven, I certainly like to see speed bumps added to that et cetera area. Where you're talking about, you, we're talking about safety. And right now, there are certain streets that are racetracks.
It's, uh, I saw that somewhere. There is traffic calming measures on the horizon.
Is that, is that, that I'm?
Yeah, it's in there, Commissioner.
Which one is it?
Uh, it's, it's.
It's under goal.
It's man, page twenty-seven, management actions, fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, traffic calming policy, project direction review.
It's number one up there.
So that's what we mean.
But it wouldn't have it in both.
Traffic common.
Yep, that's an action.
I, I would prefer to have it in both places.
As an action?
Yes.
Only prioritize it once, though. We'll list, we can list it twice, but. All right. Any other on the challenges? Going to the actions on page thirty-two. Policy is the entrance sign beautification we just talked about, Commissioner Cruz. That really hits it, what you're talking about there. Crime reduction action plan. A corridor, major corridor beautification plan. Streetlights replacement program and community cleanup program. Looking at goals, outcomes, design, and putting it, a program together. On the management actions is reimagining police a report to you? Real-time crime center implementation and art projects for twenty-three, twenty-four. What's the plan in completing them? You okay with those? Any comments there?
Art projects plan, number three.
Yep.
Are we? Okay, I guess we are talking about public arts. Yeah.
That would be part of that discussion. Does that cover it, Commissioner?
Yeah, that, that covers it.
Any other changes there? And if you look at management in progress and major projects there on page thirty-three. You okay there?
For the public safety dock project, does that include the opportunity for having? I, I know there's, there's discussion to have like a lift there to house the PD and the fire boat, which I think would also help with the fees that we currently use for the PD boat. But I believe there was a discussion about making that a like substation for, like a public safety Marina substation. Is that in this project? Or is that just specifically for the lift? For the public safety dock is chief? This one is for just the. This is just the lift? Correct. Okay, this isn't all the?
The building, you mean?
Correct. Right, this isn't the building? Correct. Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, thanks.
Any other questions?
The Heart of Boynton Unity Project, what, what we have in mind there?
That's the, the grant that we got from the Mellon Foundation for the hundred thousand dollars. It's the programming and we're going to be, the whole idea, we're starting to meet with the Heart of Boynton. We actually are going to their meeting this week. And it's going to be a series of events in, leading up to the Unity Festival, which is scheduled for February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Well, the commission meeting right before that will be rescinding the ordinances related to segregation. And it's going to be a whole series of events. We're going to put some historical monuments in, hopefully get a mural up that the community can rally around and, you know. It's in the planning, but that's what that is. And it's primarily funded through grant funding.
Very good.
Any other questions? Ready to move? Now we go to the next tab. And this is where we're going to determine our priorities. So go to page number seven in that tab. Yep, number seven. And number twenty, now we're into portrait.
You said page seven?
Page seven. Twenty is blank, right? We're going to add what we just added earlier. Waterfront master plan Marina expansion that we discussed adding. Remember that earlier? We're putting that as number twenty. So in the second tab, page twenty, or page seven, number twenty, is waterfront master plan. Commissioner, it's in page seven there. There we go. I have a question for the manager here. Does the bond issue get added as well? As a priority for the year?
I think since it's already scheduled for an agenda, I don't think that's necessary. I think it could be a mechanism to accomplish a lot of the stuff that we're, we're speaking about now as far as like the, the signs, the marquee signs entering and leaving the city. If we needed to offset the costs, I got the balance, it's two hundred and twenty-five K in the arts fund, which isn't going to come close to covering it, but it can supplement.
It becomes a funding mechanism.
It can be a funding mechanism because.
For a lot of these things.
Essentially, I don't want to use it like that, because that decision's going to be up to the community. And whether or not they, what their appetite is, is, we're parking enhancements, buildings, public safety enhancements, things like that.
Okay.
I mean, it. The commission agrees, I mean.
Sounds good to me. All righty, looking on pages five, six, and seven. This is where you get your, you look at, there are three columns here, right? In the middle column says top. The right-hand column is high. We're doing them one at a time. Looking at these twenty items, give me the six and put a check in the top column that are most important for you, looking at the next year. Does it, and don't assume they're going to naturally be done. This is giving guidance. This is where you're setting your priorities. So put a check by the seven or six most important for you. Once we identify those, then we'll go to the second round, which is high. And the number on the left of the page is the goal that it's associated with.
Lyle, what goal was number twenty associated with?
Two. And when you're ready, just signal me and read off your numbers. We're not ranking them, just put a check by the six that you feel are the most important.
Comprehensive city improvement plan.
Just numbers.
Are we including infrastructure in that?
Yes.
Okay.
You can put a slash there, infrastructure as well. That's the intent of it.
Could I make one suggestion? And I'm sorry to do this on the fly, but numbers seventeen and nineteen, I'd like to combine that to have a comprehensive plan for beautification and.
Seventeen and eighteen?
Nineteen.
Seventeen and nineteen?
Yes.
I thought one was the corridors and the other is broader communication, community cleanup.
I think it's tied together, though. I think it's important to capture, like, if people don't want to, I don't, it's up to you all, your workshop.
Catherine, can you take a look at number fifteen as well? It's also beautification plan. It just has a little bit more specific about entrance sign.
Yep.
I would, I would urge you to keep them separate, because they have different focuses and potential outcomes. But it's your call. Who's ready? You ready to go?
I'm ready.
Mayor, fire away.
You want them by number?
Just give me the numbers.
All right, so my six are number two.
We don't need it, just two?
Yes, number two. Number six?
Six.
Number eight?
Eight.
Number ten?
Ten.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen. That's what I needed. Commissioner?
Two?
Two?
Six?
Six.
Eight?
Eight.
Eleven?
Eleven.
Fourteen and seventeen.
Fourteen and seventeen.
I'm sorry, Mayor, did you give, did you give five or six numbers? If so, I missed.
I thought I gave six. It was two, six, eight, ten, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed ten.
No worries.
Okay. Commissioner, hey?
Eleven, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Got it.
Two, eight, eleven.
Eleven?
Yes.
Yep.
Sixteen.
Yep.
Twenty.
Yep.
And then whichever one we decided for the beautification. I know there was a.
Which one's most important? Fifteen?
I, I, I mean, I, I mean, if we want to get detailed, um.
Seventeen or nineteen, which one would be best meet your needs?
Let's, uh, let's go seventeen.
Got it. Commissioner?
One, two, four, eight, fifteen, sixteen.
Why don't you all give me one more choice that you did not vote on the first time? Give me a seven.
Two.
Thank you.
Ten.
Got it.
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Ten.
Twenty. Got it. Did I get everybody's? Now, we've got, uh, there's only five that came out as a top priority. They are. Number two, and there's a column on the left, you can write top in there, the blank box there. Number two, the comprehensive improvement infrastructure plan. Number eight, the mall redevelopment. Number ten, citywide economic development policy and plan. Number eleven, downtown parking master plan. And number sixteen, crime reduction action plan. Look at the remainder and give me the seven this time that are high. You, if it didn't make it in round one, guess what? Carry it over, because this is not cumulative. Yeah, do not vote for those.
Can you repeat the top again?
Two, eight, ten, eleven, and sixteen.
One.
And now out of those, you want?
No, out of the remainder.
The remainder.
Out of the remainder fifteen, give me the seven that are most important for you. And if it didn't make it in round one, I would suggest carry it over to round two.
Okay.
Those first ones really stood out. You ready?
Yes.
Fire away.
My seven are number six.
Six.
Number seven.
Seven.
Number nine.
Nine.
Fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen, fifteen.
Number seventeen. And number twenty.
Got it. Ready, Commissioner?
Yep. Number one, number four, nine, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, and seventeen.
Got it.
Okay.
Yep.
One, four, eight.
Eight's already a top. Priority.
But it was, wasn't it? Make that.
Pick twenty instead.
Pick 20 instead.
Make that six, six. Okay. Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, 18 and 19.
Got it.
Twenty, 17, 15, 12, six, four, and one.
Who am I missing? Commissioner?
Yes. Um, one, six, nine, 12, 15, 17, and 20.
This is very clear. You have eight that came out as high priority, which isn't surprising given you had less on the, they are. Number one, uh, road resurfacing program. Number four is looking at your core city services inventorying and prioritizing. Number six, which we spent a lot of time in our first session talking about, the branding and marketing is a high priority. Number nine, the Congress district redevelopment and overlay is a high priority. Number 12, strategic annexations is a, number 15, entrances, signs, beautification, we talked about that as a high priority. Number 17, uh, major corridor beautification plan, and?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Uh, waterfront master plan and Marina expansion. So we break them into top, high, and for both of those, I'll be meeting with staff as we talked about, who's going to do what when and put together an action outline that you'll see that how they plan to deal with that in the next 12 months. So, uh, those are your top and high. The others may be worked on, but if I have a choice of staff, I'd be working on these 13 that you said are the most important for you. Does that make sense? Uh, and these are clear. It's not like there was a lot of closeness. These two, there was a lot of consistency between rent one and round two. Now, you're not done yet. We got two more and then we'll get you out of here. Going to page nine, 10, and 11. There are 19 on the management. Do not assume they're done because many times you say, oh, it's done, and then a year it come back and you go, why didn't we get this done? This is your advice to the management team, which things you feel are the most important. So looking at the nine, 10, and 11, give me the seven that are most important for you.
Number six?
Number six, yes.
We determined that was completely done, right?
Yep. Then give me six.
Okay.
Could we just cut it down to 18?
And we're doing priority.
Right. No, we're doing in the top column again, like we did last time. And you're going to pick out the six top priorities.
Wait, the priority column or the top column?
Top column.
Top column, right.
And then, just like last, last round, which are the six most important for you?
On 13, what's EAR?
Is the, uh, land use amendments, valuation and appraisal report. A state action. Or action for the state, which has been modified over the years. So how are you guys doing over here? I see you guys checking them too. Did you do well? Feel well, they did.
Ten is done, Lyle.
Hmm?
Ten is done.
Ten is done. Scratch two and 10. Or six and 10. Is that correct?
Yes. Thirteen's done too.
Thirteen is done, done? Has it been adopted?
No. It's coming back. It's coming back to be adopted.
Though it's still on there. They may not need to prioritize it, but I'd leave it on the list.
Yeah, I think 18 is done as well. Real-time crime center implementation.
Mm-hmm. Is it fully implemented? Many of these are in progress that have not been completed.
I know it's, all the cameras are, everything are tied in and we utilize it during special events. I'm not sure unless they want it to be full, full-time operational.
You want to scratch it? We can?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
Give me five then.
Oh, hold on.
We've just produced the number.
That was 18, right?
Yes, that was 18.
18. So we've scratched six, 10, and 18.
Sixteen.
Need to check off some of your...
Eighteen going too?
Yeah. Give me the five that are most important for you.
Sugar me, Timbo.
All right. We'll leave it at six, Todd. If you already got them, give me six. You got yours?
No, I just want to, which number are we working with?
Six.
Okay.
So seven, eight, nine, are all a part of our comprehensive plan. Those are all elements within our comprehensive plan. Not even, Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not even sure we need to list these out. We're, we're actually going to be doing some, some planning and consulting work over this next year. We're going to be updating our entire comprehensive plan.
You want to combine those into a comp plan update instead?
Yes, I think so.
So why don't we make number seven, comprehensive plan update, and that will include seven, eight, and nine. Does that make sense?
Correct. And the other elements that aren't actually listed here as well.
So seven and scratch eight and nine, and seven becomes comprehensive plan update.
And now you're leading?
Nope. We'll leave them at six.
Easy.
We only got one.
He, he went back to six.
We're going to keep it there. We've got to have fun while we do this. The key is getting focus and that's the key. The number can be have some flex. You ready to go?
I got six, man. That's the number we're working with.
That's what we got. Go ahead, Commissioner, hey.
Okay, two, four, five, seven, 12, 14.
That was good. Thank you. Commissioner, Turkey?
I got 16, 14, 12.
Oh, you're saying if I can keep, so it's 16, 14, 12.
Seven.
Yep.
Four.
Yep.
And one.
Got it. Thank you. You're just testing whether I can go backwards too.
That's right. Keep you on your toes, Lyle.
Number three, four, seven, nine, 12.
Nine is part of number seven.
That's right. I can remove that. So 12 is my next one.
Okay.
After that was number 17.
Yep.
And I'll add 14 to it.
Commissioner, Kelly?
I have two, four, seven, 12, 14, and 19.
One, two, three, four, seven, and 14.
There are five that stand out. They are number two, fire equipment upgrades and the funding of those. Number four, the downtown projects. You guys can tell me what they are. The next one is?
Seven.
Number seven, which is the comprehensive plan update. The next one?
12.
12. The, you've got, you're doing tallies over there. 12 is the workforce housing policy and number 14 is traffic calming. Looking at the remainder, give me the five next highest for you. Those five clearly stood out.
Give us the five that were just chosen as high.
Yes, number two.
Number seven.
Two is fire equipment upgrades. Number four, the downtown projects. Number seven, the comprehensive plan update and all its elements. Number 12 is workforce housing policy and program. And number 14, traffic calming policy and projects. And again, these blew everything else away. Like when it gets five out of five, they're sort of...
So now you want five that were not named?
That is correct. Not named or scratched.
Um, can we get a little feedback on what number 17 means when we say reimagining? City manager?
Go with it. I'm sorry.
Can you tell us what number 17 means?
The reimagining police project.
Yeah, that is a, um, essentially what it is, is it deals with some social issues in the community. And it's a consultant that the police department was looking at as far as like doing, uh, better community policing. It's just reimagining the way the police interact with the communities it serves.
Remember, police departments are doing that right now and it really is changing the culture within the department too. Did that help?
Thank you.
Fair question.
How many are matching?
Fire away. Commissioner, hey?
One.
Yep.
Three.
Yep.
Five.
Yep.
Uh, 17, 19.
Got it. Thank you. Mayor?
One, three, five. So far, we're matching. One, three, five. Seventeen and 19.
Get out of here.
I promise I wasn't looking at your, I wasn't looking at your quiz, I promise.
He teaches school. Commissioner, Kelly, you ready?
Yes. Um, one, three, 16, 17, and 19.
Ready to go, Commissioner?
Um, one, it's, how many, five, six?
Five.
All right, I have five. Um, one, three, 16, 17, and 19.
Got it?
One, three, five, 16, and 15.
All right. You have six high priorities here. They are, number one, the TPA grants, which we talked about earlier, that can fund several of the projects. Number five, uh, three, the fire rescue service contracts with other cities. Number six, or number five, the indoor entertainment regulations. Number 16, the artificial coral reef projects. Number 17, reimagining policing. And number 19, arts projects for 23, 24. So what happens now is I'll get this cleaned up to staff. I'll arrange a time to meet with staff on your top and high, who's going to do what when, and all the management and progress, the deliverables and dates, as well as a mechanism for monitoring it. Uh, so that's what I needed from you tonight to finalize it. Hopefully, the process, I know it was a little elongated, made sense. You've got, I think, a quality document here with, it goes from, here's where we want to be, our destination in 15 years. Five years, the outcomes we want. And one year, what's itinerary of what do we really want to get done. And I thank you for your time tonight. And I think that concludes what I needed to get from you tonight. Hopefully, this met your needs.
All right. Well, thank you so much, everybody. Any final or closing comments from my colleagues? None from my left, none from my right, if there's nothing else. Is there anything from staff?
Uh, no, we just appreciate the commission. I know you all work full-time jobs, making time to kind of really drill this down and, you know, get the strategic plan moving in the right direction.
So, Lyle, you're going to work with staff. You're going to come back to us with the document.
Final product for your consideration, for your option.
All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Have a good night, everyone, and thank you to all of our staff and all those in attendance and listening online. Have a good night.
So you're on page five?